I'm going to call this. I'm going to call this public hearing to order. We are having the public hearings on the 2024 budgets for the Monroe Fire Protection District, the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District, and then the Monroe County budget, and the work session for the county council. And all of that is happening this evening. And this is October 3rd, 2023. I will note for the record that all seven council members are here, present in the Nat U Hill Room. This is going to be a trend. It's pretty cool. Does anyone have anything to add or remove on tonight's agenda? I would like to make sure that at the, let me see where we are here, at the end of the meeting here, number six on the agenda is discussion and approval of salary compensation changes. I would like to add the probation officer compensation grid to that just because I think it needs a little clarification. And we had not formally tabled that one and said we would talk about it tonight. So I'm adding that to item number six. All in favor of adding that to item number six? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And the ayes have it. So before we begin the public hearing portion of the meeting, I'd like to set some ground rules. We will open each budget, and anyone who wishes to make public comment will be given the opportunity to do so. Everyone here in the Nat U Hill Room is welcome to come up to the table to make comments, sign in. And if you are attending virtually, please raise your hand on using the Zoom raise hand feature, and we will enable you to speak. Everyone will be limited to three minutes per comment. Please limit the comments to the budget that is open for discussion at the time. And after a public comment, council will have the opportunity to also make comments on the budget, should they desire. There we go. Once council is finished with their comments, that for that public hearing for that budget will be closed. That's all right. We also, I just want to point out that after we do the public hearings, we do have further discussion on the agenda. So this is not the final word. And our first reading of the budgets will be next week, October 10th. And our final adoption is scheduled for October 17th. Before we get in, do we have any questions or comments from council? All right. Council, then I open the 2024 Monroe Fire Protection District budget for public comment. If any members of the public wish to speak on this budget, please either step forward to the table here or click the hand icon now. I see nobody on Zoom with a hand up, and I do not see anybody in the room stepping forward. Are there any comments from council members on the Monroe Fire Protection District budget? Nope. All right. If there are no comments, the public hearing for 2024 Monroe Fire Protection District budget is now closed. I feel like there should be a minimum time. Counsel, I'm moving to item four. I'll open the 2024 Monroe County Solid Waste Management District budget for public comment. Just as before, if there's anybody in the Nat U Hill Room who would wish to speak, please either step forward and sign in, or if you're online, use the raise hand option. I'm seeing no one making comments. Are there any comments or questions from council? All right. Given no comments, the public hearing for the 2024 Monroe County Solid Waste Management District budget is now closed. Next, we have the Monroe County Budget Public Hearing, and I'll open that. The 2024 Monroe County budget is open for public comment. If you're in the Nat U Hill Room, please come forward. And if you're online, please use the raise hand function to let us know you'd like to comment. We do have one person online. And that's Mr. Shelton. Go right ahead.
Good afternoon, Counsel. Jim Shelton with the chamber. Just want to express our appreciation and our compliments for your efforts on adjusting salaries. I know you're not quite finished, and you'll work on that some more tonight. But you did hard work, very complicated work, and we think we agreed that it needed to be done, and we compliment you for doing that, and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to make comments on the Monroe County 2024 budget? No one. Oh, someone. Lisa Ridge? We appreciate your willingness to step forward, Lisa.
Well, I didn't get to be here before when you had, I think, a little bit bigger of a crowd. I was out of town. I just want to say thank you for the consideration of eight and a half percent. I've been here 36 years, and what you guys have done over the last two to three years for county employees, I think, has been a great accomplishment and moving in the right direction. It helps us to try and retain employees, makes morale better, makes, I think, people feel appreciated. So I really encourage you to keep going with the eight and a half percent recommendation because I think our employees deserve it, and it's tough times. Everything's so expensive, and as a department head, we want to support those employees and do what's right. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the 2024 Monroe County budget? I see none. And if there are no more comments on the 2024 Monroe County budget, I will turn to council. Any comments or questions, further discussion?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to briefly note that for any member of the public watching, the council has had pretty extensive hearings on these budgets, and we had a lot of great deal of conversation. Then the counselors, perhaps counselors such as myself, I have a philosophy that tonight or today is the public's day to weigh in on this, and that's what I'm listening for. I have lots of comments about all these budgets, which have been prepared by wonderful people working very hard and diligent, including this council trying to figure things out. I'll have those comments later, but I didn't want anyone in the public to think we're not talking about something. This is actually for them to listen, and if they have nothing to say, perhaps we've said it well, or we've done it well, or we're trying to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Counselor Hawke?
Yes. I just wanted to comment that as we've been moving along with challenges of hearing from the commissioners and the auditor staff, auditor's office, saying that there's the dollars there for the eight and a half percent increase. And yet, I have still not seen, and perhaps the rest of you have, I haven't seen that three-year lookout. Where's that going to leave us in three years? I know that you questioned that at the last meeting, but I think for us to say that we support this, in theory, from the beginning, I said, I'd love to say eight and a half. Show me the money. I don't mean just the money to do it right now. I mean, how do we do it three years from now? When we take off these big chunks of money that we are working with, how many people can we, are we going to sustain the number of people? Are we going to have layoffs? Are we going to have, what kind of cutbacks are we going to have? And I think that's a reasonable question, and I think this council has a right to have that answer before we make that decision, not just for our county employees, but for the taxpayer who's paying these dollars. Because it's reasonable to assume that if it's not sustainable, we'll have to come up with some kind of additional tax on the public. And so I want to be truthful when we're doing this. And thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Munson?
I want to follow up on Counselor Hawke's comment because I raised this last meeting. Do we have time yet before our next meeting to arrange with FSG to give us the kind of review that would give us some perspective about three years down the road? I don't think the numbers are all that complicated. I think our forecasts and the expertise in our auditor's office can really help, but I just simply do not know. Does anybody have an idea whether we have enough time to have this before the next meeting?
I would turn to staff. Auditor Smith?
Yes, I saw Greg Garitas at the, at AIC, and he is very extremely busy. He says he just can't add one more thing. We specifically talked about that, which I understand. But I can address Marty's concern. I understand that it's just like paying bills at home. Well, I have the money next year to pay this. If I, if I go out and buy a new car, and now my payment's another couple hundred bucks a month, right? But let's remember that this year, we received four percent. We'll, four percent above what we received in '22. We are getting that money in December. In Jan, in June and December of next year, we'll get four percent above that number. And the following year, if everything turns the way it's turned it every year for the past 20 years I've been here, we'll be getting four percent again. So when we look at eight percent, just what we're getting at the end of this year and the new max levy increase, and next year's max, max levy increase, yes, we absolutely have it sustainable. That's not to mention the additional interest that we have not had in the past year. That's 3 million, plus the, the money from, that has, we have yet to receive from the opioid money and the FEMA money that should be here any day. So when, when you ask me, as a person who looks out and forecasts how much money we're going to make, I do not see anything trending down that would prevent us from paying this out in the next three years. In addition, we have a substantial amount of money in our rainy day fund. And if you would like to do that, you could earmark two or three million dollars of that large amount of money to make sure that these, these salaries are sustainable. That is a question of what, how do you prioritize the money that we have in our savings account? Which, as you know, over the past, this is my seventh year, as, ending my seventh year as auditor, I worked very hard to scrape money together and pay things out of some creative ways, legit creative ways, to make sure you guys had money in that savings account to make good decisions with. I think an excellent decision would be, we want to put our employees first. Let's earmark a third of that money, or 25% of that money, so that we can guarantee that, that especially the general fund, this money is sustainable. In addition, you know, we could back it up by using the, putting the opioid money there or some other, the FEMA payback money, which goes in the general fund. I don't want you to enter this budget concerned that we cannot sustain this. Now, I'm not saying that we'll get big raises next year or the next year. We really haven't got big raises in the past, with the exception of the, the justice group with the sheriff's department and the jail. We're talking about the ordinary people who work here, who are trying to make their car payments and their house payment. We are making up for what they didn't get last year and moving forward with this year. And I do believe in my heart that it's absolutely sustainable.
Thank you. Counselor McKim?
Well, I'm going to say that I think taking earmarking money out of one-time pots is kind of the very opposite of sustainable. But that said, I mean, we've got, you know, we've got a financial statement for this budget that we're going to be asked to consider. It's not that hard to just play that forward another two years. That's, yeah, it's not rocket science. I think it should be pretty easy to create a notional 2025 and 2026 budget using some pretty simple assumptions related to the numbers we already have in front of us and see what it looks. Yeah, but I, yeah, I think that would not be that, that difficult to do, regardless of, of Mr. Garitas' availability. I think it would be a reasonable thing to do.
So Counselor Deckard?
One thing I would say, I do think it is incumbent upon us to support and figure out all the things we need to figure out over a three-year period so we can do that. Now that said, we have said to our departments and the other elected officials that we have a goal for this year, and that is to try to figure out how we honor this request rate and a half, and we have done that. I want to make sure that anyone watching right now, which I suspect is going to be some county employees that have been very thoughtful on this, that they're not taking any of this discussion as us not working towards a goal we've well established. And I think we have. I think we've reached that mark. I think that eight and a half is here. I think a lot of people came to these tables, and they helped us figure that out. But we can't do two things at one time, and I think that is for next year, which we all know, the minute we adopt that budget, assuming the next couple of weeks that, that continues on the path that it is, the next budget begins immediately. In fact, we discover almost instantaneously this or that. And Lisa Ridge, if she's still here, has got some list that she's already thinking about. I know that because that's why she's good at her job. And same for Beth Hamlin and everyone else that we've got here. They think about that. And so that'll start again and start anew. I do think that when Garitas is here and we have them for that time, I think we maximize the time we have with a consultant that we pay so that we get that kind of information. I think that we need to, there's a million things we could talk about with the state of Indiana, what they could do, not do. I think we maximize that time to know what are we looking at specifically so that we do have that. But for this year, to me, the work has been done. The, the goal has been met, the sacrifices have been made, and that is the present question when we get to that official vote after today's public hearing.
Thank you. Counselor Munson?
So, following up, I appreciate Counselor McKim's assessment that we could get a financial forecast, that it wouldn't be too difficult. Who's going to prepare this?
I mean, I, I think that is something that certainly the, either, I mean, I can't speak for the auditor's office, but the auditor's office is certainly capable of doing that, as is the council office. I don't have the ability to direct work for the auditor's office.
Right. Could we, could we ask Auditor Smith if you can do the, a preliminary forecast for us to give, to give a little comfort to those of us who are concerned about three years down the road?
You know, I would be happy to do that. However, I'm just going to multiply everything by a hundred and one, or 100.04, you know, 04%, because it's 4% every year, and look at the average of what lit increase has been, which has been 4% or greater. So I'm not sure what you're asking me to do. Just repeat what I exactly said on paper? I mean, the issue is, the money is there. Jeff, you know, I've been doing this a long time. I haven't been wrong yet. I've never let you guys down. I've never let you miss any money or not pay a bill. If anything, I've been so frugal that we've built this savings account up. And the one-time money I'm talking about is if any one department that's, say, not on a general fund or something else dips, we have money to cover it in that rainy day fund. My more, my concern would be a certain fund not producing the way it's produced in the past, not, not tax money. If you go out and you look at how much, how much real estate is being built, the, the expanding prices of these homes, we are not going to go backwards. We're just not. It's a housing shortage here. There's hardly any houses for sale. I think we are on, I think we are safer on property tax in money coming, and, and lit money coming in than probably any county, or as equally as safe as any county in the entire state. I'm very proud of the performance that this county has made financially.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm actually not concerned myself. I mean, to address what Mr. Deckard, the comments that Mr. Deckard made, yeah, I'm, I'm satisfied with the budget that we've created. I'm not, I have no interest in kind of backing off on any of the increases that we, we've passed. But I do think for counselors who are interested in seeing how this plays out in a couple of years, it's just, I think it's, it's a perfectly responsible and easy thing to do. So, I mean, Michelle, is that something that you think that, that you would?
Sure, I'll tackle something, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Really appreciate that. And I do have one more question for the auditor's office. The money that is coming to us soon for the opioid settlement and from FEMA, will those funds be investable that are not actively being spent?
That's really a treasure question. However, I did spend eight years as a treasurer. All of our money is investable. Every single penny of it is investable. And right now, I don't, I personally don't have a single investment account that's making less than 5%. So I expect, when we were talking about these big changes, I expect them to trend either flat or up. So I'm very happy about that.
So, thank you. I wanted to hear that.
I want to make clear, what I want us to know is how sustainable it is so that we recognize when people come to us for additional appropriations or, or growth in budgets or whatever, that we don't feel like that there's just a, a non-ending pot of money. We need to know where we are because we know that, that what we heard, after we heard, oh, we have this big deficit, then we heard, no, it's not so bad because we've got all this interest money. And the interest money is not only because the interest went up, but because there's a huge amount of money sitting there that we're going to be spending down, so it won't be bringing in the same kind of interest and, as well as the ARPA money. So I think we need to just address how much that is and what will not be in place because we use that in the miscellaneous revenue. I have not seen the miscellaneous revenue, the totals in there for what each thing was. One of the things for the end of 2022, no, 2023, I, I noticed online, you can see what that is, that it was only entered at like 200,000 for the last half of this year. Well, we know if we got 2 million for the first half, we're surely going to get close to that in the last half. So we, maybe that was changed in what our projected 4B is going to be. What I looked at for miscellaneous revenue is what is already online that showed what, what that interest revenue was. But those are things that we can work at during a work session so that we can understand it because I think there's been a lot of discussion about how much money do we really have? Not just what we can get our hands on now, but what are we going to do to continue to make sure? Because I don't think any of us want to see us step in a hole and lose employees. So I just want everyone to just know that we're looking at the numbers, we're going to research the numbers, and we are going to act in a responsible manner to provide services because our employees represent services to the taxpayer.
I can address that. The other receipts column has $200,000 in it. However, the refund and reimbursements also has 340,000, and the earnings on investments and deposit has $3 million in it for next year. And our cash balance-
For next year, I was talking for the last half of this year.
Okay, for the last half of this year, it, the earnings and investments of deposits has 1.2 million in it, and we've been receiving in substantially each month. 170,000 for refunds and reimbursements, 100,000 for other receipts. And I do want to also remind everyone that we keep at least a $20 million cash balance in the general fund. You know, at, at, you know, 5%, that's a million bucks, right? Each, each, each year. We, we don't see that changing. And as long as interest rates hold up, which 5% sounds like a lot of money, but it really wasn't until just a couple of years ago. You know, that was, that was just normal or even lower than normal interest. And it seems like the economy has, has bounced back to the point where it's, it's, it's frugal, but it's steady. And so I don't see that going down.
I appreciate, I appreciate our auditor's opinion, and thank you for sharing that. I also have confidence in our, in our budget and the decisions we've made. I, I think that perhaps I would feel more comfortable to see it on paper in a very simplified form. And, you know, I, very similar to what we do have for this year, looking ahead, and I get that we're just adding 4% each year. However, once we have that, and I've talked with staff about this a little bit, I would like to investigate what it, what our contract with FSG allows us to do in terms of financial planning. And in the next year, I'd like to pursue a little bit more diligently, a three-year, perhaps five-year look at what our revenue, what our expenses, you know, also what, you know, what are our liabilities that, that aren't necessarily specifically revenue and expenses? But I know we have other things that, that can impact what our reserves are, what our, and what our cash balances are. And I think in doing that, it'll put us in a better position next year to think through, perhaps from a fiscal standpoint, what are, you know, strategically, what are our longer-term objectives? Obviously, on an elected body where seats change, opinions change. But from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, I would hesitate to think that anyone in this, this position couldn't agree that what we're looking for is long-term financial sustainability, and we could come up with some vision for the county in terms of organizational finances over the long term. So that's just stuff I've been thinking about, and I can stop talking about it now. But we will be looking into FSG and, and what we can do to work with them because I certainly appreciate it. When we've gotten information from them, I would like to, if possible, be more active in that relationship. Auditor Smith?
And I certainly encourage that. FSG and particularly Greg Garitas, who I've known many years, he, it, it is a certified public funds investor and counselor. And there is a, you know, some government regulations on that, and that's one reason I'm hesitant to do it when you already have a contract with somebody. We just, this is 11th hour, and I don't want you to be uncomfortable. What I'm trying to say is that $3 million in interest will cover the raises themselves without even touching the other 4% that property tax will bring in. So if any year that we can do it, this is certainly the year.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any chance that Garitas wouldn't be able to do anything. Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any chance that Garitas wouldn't be able to do anything productive in the next week.
No, okay.
But that's really, yeah, not the point, I think. I think we have sort of underutilized that resource.
Are there any other comments or questions on our budget? All right. Seeing then, then, the public hearing for the 2024 Monroe County budget is now closed and we move to item six on our agenda. And I'd like to go ahead and open for discussion the probation officer compensation grids, um, or grid. Clarification is really what I'm looking for here. And I just, um, because it's become to my attention that there's been, um, some differing interpretations of what we intended when we, um, at our last meeting indicated that yes, probation officers should have an 8.5% cost of living increase. My understanding was and still is that we are using as the base for that the current 2023 salaries that are being paid to our probation officers. Just as we are for all of the other departments and all of the staff for county government, we're giving them eight and a half percent above what they currently make. Having stated my interpretation, I wanted to find out if that was ever, the, if that's what everyone else on, on council was indeed thinking when we passed that.
That is correct.
Yes, go ahead.
That is absolutely what, what I was thinking. And I think it's in keeping with the philosophy of what a cost of living increase is. I mean, if the whole point of this increase is to cover the increases in people's expenses due to inflation, then, you know, to base it on some kind of artificial state number doesn't make any sense. We're based, I, you know, I think it makes more sense to base it on what they have been making. This is what they need, you know, this is the additional money they need to lit to keep their heads above water.
Uh, Counselor Munson and then Counselor Hawk?
So, uh, when we made the change in the probation officer's cost of living adjustment last year, it was to, um, make their compensation equitable with other county employees. And I feel the same for this year. We should use the same base. Um, that has been my thinking all along. Thank you.
Counselor Hawk?
You're saying that you're saying the base where they are right now on the council. What I would just want to add to that is that, uh, I hate to refer to Councilor McKim, but I think I saw in a call recently that he said, well, it might, there will be that in the following year, we might have to do something like maybe no raises for county employees. Well, I think that's sort of how I read it. Now, what we have to remember is there wouldn't be any for the rest of the employees, but the state said probation officers got a raise, we would have to do that. So probation officers get a raise, rank and file won't get it. I mean, that could happen. And I'm just saying that those are things that we have no control of. If we determine we're always going to use the state numbers to keep up with us and we're not going to just them back down, what, so? But I don't have a dog in this fight, whatever you guys want to do.
Counselor McKim?
Since Counselor Hawk preferred to use my words, I, I want to make sure I can clarify. When I made that statement, I was referring to that that if we wound up in trouble essentially, if revenues were a lot less than expected, that would be, our corrective action would be to give no raise in future years, not to cut salary. That was the point I was trying to distinguish is that that's, we, we don't have that as a remedy because we don't cut people's salaries.
Oh, yeah.
That our, that our corrective action, if things just, you know, if, if the interest market, uh, you know, went to hell and we wound up getting absolutely nothing, uh, in interest income in, in 2025 or something like that, then that would be our, uh, our response. It wasn't to threaten that as a, as a realistic possibility.
Right, I, by the way, I didn't think that I read it that way, nor do I think I said it that way, that you were discussing cutting salaries, just that they might not be increased. There's a big difference between that wording. But we can agree to disagree.
Counselor Deckard?
Thank you. I think the larger takeaway for me on, on, on this is that in the last two years, we've learned a lot about fairness and bringing the probation officer team into the county family by embracing it where values meet. And that is how you folks are compensated. And I cannot tell you the number of comments I get on this. And they're positive comments when we do it. You know, as a child of a county employee, I will say this, and I don't know how the council will take it, but I'll offer it, but the words that we use in here get remembered by the families of county employees. No shock there because we handle the money. And I think for a lot of probation families, that parity, that fairness means the world because they can't change state law. In fact, they go out every day and they administer how state law impacts folks in our judicial system. But that fairness speaks volumes. We know numbers and, I'm going to offer this. Employers that have emotional intelligence on their folks, to read their folks, read their audience, know that. They will get 22 times the productivity out of those folks that others do. So if we're reading our folks and we're knowing that I'm going to treat you with parity and fairness, uh, then down the road we go. And I think this is huge. And I want to make sure that at least while my time is here, that we're, we're talking about that, saying that. I don't know, again, what next year will bring and we'll have to visit that just like we do every year. But I know that that's, uh, this is important.
Counselor Iverson?
And I, I, I want to piggyback a little bit on what Counselor Deckard was saying and, and offer an additional perspective that this, uh, in, in my mind is a great way to see where there is an issue in where we are allocating funding and, and seeing that there is a high turnover rate in a certain area and targeting investments so that we are trying to stem that tide. And I think a cost of living adjustment, and I know this conversation is about the base rate and, and what we're basing it off of. But I, I do think that sometimes that gets lost, that not too long ago, we were not talking about probation COLA increases. And now we are talking about trying to plug a gap and trying to make sure that our fantastic probation officers are sticking around or retaining them.
Thank you. It seems from the comments that we have a consensus on using the 2023 salary grids. I'm just looking to staff to make sure that they feel like we've resolved the issue. Great. The, um, next item I would like to open for discussion is a, is one that we had, uh, put off from our last meeting, which is the election, elected officials and chief deputies, um, compensation for 2024. Just as a refresher, we have, um, as of last year, created a, what I call a ladder of, um, a 100% base salary and, um, assigned percentages to elected officials based on that, um, 100% level. So some elected officials receive 100%, some receive 30-some percent and everything in between. That was intended to avoid a yearly discussion on individual changes to all of the various, um, elected positions in county government, of which there are many. Something to consider when talking about elected official salaries is of course that several, um, offices have chief deputies whose salaries are tied to their elected official at 90%. And I believe that, um, our council administrator has prepared, um, a table so that we have a visual to kind of anchor our discussion on this. But the way we left it was I was asking if elected officials were to receive an eight and a half percent COLA or some other amount of COLA or if there was, um, another approach that some, that council felt was, um, preferable. Could you make that bigger, please? Beautiful. So, um, on the screen you see the, um, what we call the grid and with the 100% level at the top, um, and the, and called the base. So the first, uh, light blue column is what, um, is being paid right now during 2023. And Michelle has added columns for 4%, 6% and 8.5% as, um, though we, um, do not change the, the ladder or grid as, as it's called. Um, so as it stands, you can see down the left hand, far left column, you see the percentages assigned to each of the, uh, elected officials. Um, and it looks like Auditor Smith has something to add.
Counsel, I'd like to make a recommendation to you as a long-term employee, one has been a regular employee, a chief deputy and, uh, an elected official. Now, I've never, in all the years I've been elected official, advocated for more money for me, as you guys know that. As a matter of fact, I've recused myself and we've talked about that. But I do see disparity if we do not give the elected officials, you give the elected officials also eight and a half percent. And I want to tell you this because as a person who cares about the employees, you guys are employees too. We're, I'm an employee, everybody's employee that's elected official. And I know in the past, you guys have been more than generous with not asking for a larger salary. If I were up here doing exactly what I'd want to do, I would be asking you guys to raise your salaries to half what the commissioners make. I'm not going to do that. Um, I'm, I'm not going to do that because Kate and I had this discussion. I said, but next year I will be asking for that because I think that what you guys do is as valuable. And maybe you do it at halftime, but if you do do it at halftime and they're full-time, that should be 50%. So next year I'm going to ask for that. Next year's my last year's auditor. And I would really, this, this will be the only year that I'm, that I get this salary, right? I would really like you guys to give everybody, elected officials and every single person across this county, an equal amount, whatever you pick. Eight and a half is great, but whatever we pick, whatever you guys pick and you, and you allow us to make, please understand that there is not a person at this table or a commissioner or elected official or a chief deputy that's any less valuable than the next person. And I think if you give yourselves and everybody else something less, it, in, in a way, kind of looks that way and it's not the truth. We couldn't have a wonderful county government. And when I get, I just go back from AIC, I mentor many other auditors across this state, many, many of them started last January. So I've been very busy this year doing that. And I can tell you that they look at us as a model. I would like us to send a message to the world, to the community, to the, the county, to the world, that we really do believe in equality, equality in pay, equality in the way we care about each other and, and equality in the way we serve each other. And I think anything else demeans that message to some extent. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Are there any other, uh, comments? Go ahead, Counselor McKim.
I mean, yeah, equality, I'm not sure I agree with that framing because clearly the, by even the percentages we've chosen, we're not paying everybody, all elected officials equally, nor would I argue that we should. I am inclined to, I, I do kind of think that we spend a lot of time coming up with those numbers and those percentages. And I hate to, and, and the whole point, as Counselor Wiltz has pointed out multiple times, was to avoid having these arguments every, every year. And so my, the, the, it seems like the simplest. I know we hate the idea of feathering our own nests. It is really a hard thing to do as elected officials to have to vote to raise our own salaries. None of us really want to do that. But I do think that, that, that the, probably the simplest way to do it is to at least give this system we came up with a year. And, and, and just give, uh, you know, rather than immediately dismantling and reconstructing it, that, that 8.5% for everybody makes sense. So I mean, that, unless somebody convinces me otherwise, I, you know, I understand there are some, there are some other controversies, uh, controversial salaries in here. I know that some, uh, are concerned with commissioner's salary, some are concerned with the surveyor's salary. But I think the simplest at this point is to let our system work for a year and give all the elected officials the same percentage, which would be the same that we give to employees.
All right. Um, I'm going to go with Counselor Deckard and then Counselor Munson.
So I appreciate Counselor McKim's comments. I appreciate also what the auditor says. I, I will say that I kind of have a working philosophy that probably doesn't endure me maybe to, to other elected officials at times in that I, I think that no one in the public, uh, they do not weep for elected officials, nor I think are they expected to. Um, that doesn't necessarily, um, speak highly or reward a system by which, uh, we do need people to step forward to do these jobs, 110%. And we have to have folks that, that step forward to serve. And, um, and when better folks come along, they take our, our place and the, the voters, they pick and choose between all that. That said, one thing I appreciate about this system that Counselor Wiltz, I think, broke three arms trying to get done, is that we have a grid that took off the whole this for that, for this that we were facing and has made this a little bit more digestible and manageable. And at the same token, it is, it associates the chief deputy in that grid, which is a thing that is, um, akin to the elected that is serving in that role and is also akin to, uh, the folks that are working in that department. And so for me, when I look at this, to be consistent with that, keeping that together, to me, makes sense. Because I think if we're going to start breaking that apart, we dishonor the work that was done that made this a little more difficult. And to me, with the chief deputy in that mix, you have to look at the eight and a half percent. Um, a, a chief deputy, a lot of times is a person that is doing a leadership role that is beyond sometimes what we imagine. And, uh, we want that person to be in that job for a fact. Uh, we've had some notoriously strong chief deputies that have done tremendous things for this community. And a lot of times they're a real crucial link for an elected official that's running that, that program. And I do think, yeah, yeah, look, it is difficult to come and talk about it because we have the elected positions in there. And again, no one weeps for an elected official, nor should they. Uh, but that said, that chief deputy is part of that matrix and I do not want to damage that in that process. And to me, that, this makes sense kind of under what Counselor McKim is saying.
Counselor Munson and then Counselor Hawk?
I certainly have had the chief deputies in mind from the very beginning on this. And also, this is my 11th year of trying to figure out what to do about elected official salaries. And I think it is time to put into practice what we thought we were doing last year and that is to make it easy and predictable. Because we do need to have things predictable, to have staff and to have people run for offices. So, uh, I do favor the eight and a half percent for all. Thank you.
Other comments, Counselor, oh, Counselor Hawk, I'm sorry.
What I like about the grid is it takes the personalities out of it. It is just too easy to have some kind of a conflict with another elected official or another department or, in, in many ways, maybe people aren't working. Oh, well, we see what happened in Washington DC, uh, today. But it, it seems to me that if this, if we want to just make sure that we're not playing political games, we're not taking into account personalities or even whether or not they show up for work every day because we can't control that. We can't. Uh, we have, we can't tell them how to run their office. We can't tell them- Uh we have, we can't tell them how to run their office. We can't tell them what their chief deputy should do. So it just seems to me we we have to follow a system. If if everyone thought this was a good system last year, then why are we going to throw this out? Uh just just saying. I don't want to play a political role on it. I'm I have to say no often. Okay.
I want to comment quickly on what Counselor Hawke just said, that we thought it was a good system last year. No, we were hoping it was a good system last year. And that's and it's I think it has proven to be. So thank you.
Counselor Iverson.
Uh I certainly don't want to blow this up uh for all the reasons already mentioned. I do want to give voice to um an opinion that uh was shared to me uh in regards to this. And it and it's the fact that there is, this brings up the grid, this brings up the income inequality amongst the different grids. It's it's a fact of life between Comet and this grid. Um and it's it's really glaring. Um but what I would say to that point is we are investigating ways to bring up those lower salaries. We are working on ways to address those things, especially in this time where it is so hard to uh you're you've seen costs rise. So uh I I wanted to give voice to the fact that this isn't awkward just in that we're looking at increasing our own salary, but that it's being done in the face of those who are making so much less than this. And uh I I wanted to give voice to the fact that we are working uh on all aspects of our grid.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. Then this we have not voted to move forward, but um I'm going to propose that we I'll make a motion. I move that we move forward with an eight and a half percent COLA increase to the elected officials' grid for two thousand twenty-four. And I would need a second.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Then um I think it would be good to have a roll call vote on this.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
This is difficult. I thought we were going to vote on salary ordinance together, but at any rate, yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Um the next item I would like to, yes.
That motion did not include chief deputies.
I think it was in, I think it was implied. I meant it to be implied.
It's it's because they get ninety percent, so it's fine. Okay.
Yep. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. It's good to be clear. So the next item that I would like to um open for discussion is another one that we uh tabled to this meeting uh from last, and that is a possible additional increase to the Comet classification grids for two thousand twenty-four. Um we've already agreed to move forward with the eight and a half percent. Um and I was suggesting that we consider an additional flat increase to all Comet positions uh because of their relatively lower um compensation rate across the grid. And I do have updated numbers if we'd like to take a look at that. I shouldn't say I have them. Ms Shell has them as usual. Um if you could put those up, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, my God.
When I presented this to you before, I had done it kind of really quickly. And so I realized that uh when I went back and looked, I had done my formula incorrectly. So this does reflect um the additional flat rate of a quarter and the additional flat rate of fifty-five cents on the eight point five increase. So I was going, I was going all the way back to two thousand twenty-three base. So that does have the correct amounts now. So the overall oops, sorry. Fiscal fiscal impact is there at the bottom now.
The and that's inclusive of eight and a half percent. So it's not
That's on top of the eight and a half.
Oh.
Yes.
It's on top of it.
Yeah, we've already done the
Yeah, okay.
I've already done the eight and a half, so this is on top of.
And the so the two, the two totals there, seventy-nine thousand and some, and then one seventy-five thousand and some are for a point, a a twenty-five cent on the hour um increase flat or a fifty-five cent. Those are just two numbers relatively close to a thousand dollars per year and half-ish of that. Of certainly, it's within our power to suggest others, but as you can see, um it would play out differently. All of the numbers above it include thirty-five hour per week employees and forty hour per week employees, which is why this page is above. Um but we're looking at an impact um of, you know, between eighty and one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars if we were to choose something in that range. I'm curious to see what other folks think because, like I said, I wanted us to consider this. I think it's an important thing to keep talking about. I'm I'm interested in making sure that we're always paying attention to those of our employees who are most impacted by economic whimsy. And these folks certainly have been um and bumping bumping these salaries a little bit can mean a whole lot for individuals. Um I will pause and allow Counselor McKim to make a comment.
Just just to make clear, uh the grand totals there are across all funds. Is that correct? That's not just the general fund? Sorry, my microphone doesn't really, isn't very loud.
That's consistent.
You have to go unprotected like me.
It is, it is not just general fund, correct? That is across all funds?
Yes, that is.
Yes, that is the total across all funds.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Oh, go ahead.
So just to make sure, I also, sorry, I'm kind of recapping what I heard. The the fifty-five cent is essentially a thousand dollars for a thirty-five hour a week or or a forty. What did you base?
Good question.
I believe that was for thirty-five hours.
Okay.
I'll do, I'll
Fifty-five.
Well, that those bottom lines are the bottom lines for all of them together.
The green.
Yes, the uh fifty-five cents, if you take that times uh the thirty-five hours, it is a thousand one dollar.
Oh, okay. And so then the forty hours, we just get proportionally.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Other thoughts or questions? Counselor Iverson?
So five days ago in Sacramento, California, lawmakers there increased the wages of food workers to twenty dollars an hour. I think it's because they're watching what we were doing here. But the important thing about this
And that's why Congress asked of the speakers.
That's right, that's right.
They're watching our
Monroe County Council setting the agenda here. In in all sincerity, uh this thousand-dollar bump brings folks up past twenty dollars an hour. That is important. Uh it it is important for folks to be able to be in these jobs, doing the work they do, and be able to earn that wage. Now, I I will also say that I think it's really important that we do something in this vein. I'm personally a fan of that that fifty-five cent flat total because we just did something for the electeds. I understand the distinction between the deputies, and it's important to support the deputies, and it's important to support all the electeds. Uh but it is really important to me that we do something on both ends of our uh of our salary grids.
Thoughts?
No matter where they are as far as a comment, you think that fifty-five cent should be added on to each one?
It it if you you making a decision across a whole grid keeps that grid intact. And when we asked advice a couple of years ago on um our salaries across the board, we were told that if we were to make changes, we could do so by grid, but tinkering inside of it squishes things and makes things very messy.
Yeah, and we need to keep the grid intact.
Uh Counselor McKim.
Oh, I I just kind of want to remind us of one of the things we did when we were really tired um last week. But I but I'm I'm really happy we did, which was getting rid of longevity for new employees. Yep. So just to reiterate, longevity so far from from the way we we indicated our intention to proceed, longevity would be gone for new employees hired after January first, not nobody who's currently employed now. But what that does is that that we then, the whole idea is we take that money and just plow it into salaries. That's that's money that's already being paid out to employees and instead just pay it as salary. Employees also then get retirement on that as well. Um and so, you know, obviously, the savings in the first year are going to be relatively small, but as you project that forward as employees rotate in and out, the idea of of uh eliminating that longevity gives us a substantial will give us a substantial amount of money to use to improve salaries, particularly among the comments.
So is there a reason why we're saying we can hold off until any new employee now coming on board? It's not even been interviewed yet. Let's say they're hired two weeks from now, three weeks from now. They will get longevity when we've already decided we're not going to do this anymore? Why don't we just
That's true. We could have started earlier.
We have massive hiring push in the county.
For the hundred dollars they'll get that first year.
Oh, look, I'm just saying it it sends a message to our employees that we value the ones that are here, and we're not going to make them have to take a hit for what it costs for the new ones coming on board. Uh because it happens every time. The more people you add, the less money there is uh to to fight for the ones that are already there.
That's I you make a very good point.
That is a good point, and that's I almost, to me, a separate issue. I mean, something that we can talk about, but in terms of a vote or a determination, it would be sec- a a second um item. So I am going to write a little note about longevity right here on the middle my script.
It's about me.
So I don't forget what to say. Yes.
I was going to add that the more I look at the comment numbers, which has taken me a second to get my head around it, and the more I process some of the we we've had some messages come in from our county employees, and I have to say they've done a remarkable job in this budget decision, taking their time and reaching out to us, and I appreciate that they have. Uh but the more I process all that, the more doing something in comments makes sense. And I, the more I look at it, I'm tending to be with Counselor Iverson and and Counselor Wiltz, I think, on some of this that's that's been offered. Um on on the longevity, I was notably a no vote next week with the caveat, I wanted to figure this out as we move. Um I would be okay, just this is just me, and I'm just one of uh seven here. Uh but I would be okay with us figuring out uh maybe a start time that either was first of January or even a little bit back on that. What I don't want is somebody that is sitting in an interview tomorrow and has looked at the options, and they're weighing this between this and AT&T and City of Bloomington. And that this was a a factor, not that it is. I don't want that to come down to it here in the middle of the week. So for me, if we could figure out a trade-off on that, I'd like to see us do something fairly substantial in the comments because of those comments, comments on the comments that we received. Hopefully, that made sense.
The Comet comments.
Comments on the comments.
You got it.
I was going to make a motion, but
Are there any other? Okay, make a motion.
Make a motion.
And it was, this will be in it, yeah, okay. The uh counsel, I move that we give all comments uh fifty-five cents on the hour in addition to the eight point five that's already been granted, and that we end longevity for new employees hired November first and after.
Second.
Wow, he made my two issues into one. Look at you go.
I know what you were saying. These are two separations. I'm like, no, they're not.
No, they're not. No, they're not. I want to Okay, all right. Um
And I will, and I'll offer this. I agree with that. I think that's a wonderful motion. And here's one other thing I'd like to say. This council is working together through all these things and doing this, and every branch of government could take a page off this right now. We are seeing a lot of headlines about different things. This is how it's done when it works well. So I appreciate that. I think that makes sense. It accomplishes all of our needs and a few headaches, and down the road we go. That's awesome, Counselor McKim.
I I apologize. I cannot hear what you're saying. So I got the additional fifty-five cents um on top of the eight point five. I didn't hear the longevity part.
And and longevity uh for employees hired November first and after.
And longevity for employees hired November first
And after.
And after.
Sorry, yeah, my mic is obviously not.
Yeah.
No, it's it's picked, it's picked up on the on the transcript.
It likes you.
Um I re- I really like this motion. When I said it was two separate things, that's because apparently I am not a sophisticated motion maker. And I appreciate those at the table who are. And I've said this before, often our meetings, especially um I think over the past year or so have been a lot of sausage making sitting in this room. And um I appreciate what Counselor Deckard said because I feel like this is the appropriate way to make the decisions. And um I'm thankful for the collegiality. Are there other comments or discussion on the motion? Uh yeah, Auditor Smith.
I would like to say that, uh if you can hear me or not, but I'd like to say that that is an excellent way to change salaries because it makes it easier to do the payroll. And that our payroll, you talked about making sausage. You've never seen making sausage. Do you see this payroll? So thank you very much. The other ways are a little more difficult. But this straight fifty-five cents for this group of people on this scout, this salary scale makes it a lot easier and quicker to pay it, and it's savings of, you know, money and time. Thank you.
Great. Uh yes.
Um I just want to clarify that with making the um longevity end beginning November first, we will need to amend our salary ordinance for two thousand twenty-three as well. So um Right.
Well, no, because they wouldn't have an, if if they were hired ma- and by the end of this year, they would not have an anniversary within the two months that they're that they're hired. Right? So it it won't affect this year's salary.
Right. So we still don't need, we don't need to do our, I'm looking at legal because we were just talking about it, so. Okay.
Okay, so I was going to say, when when we figure out if we need to, we can still do that at our work session or at any point, right?
I'll look at it, and if we need to amend it, I'll draft some proposals.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, appreciate it.
And the motion was- that any new hires beginning November first upon will not receive longevity. How difficult is that to understand? It's not, I didn't think so, all right.
Let's go ahead and vote, we will call vote, please.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. If I'm not incorrect, I believe we have covered the items on our agenda, except for council comments. I'm making sure, 'cause I hopped around my paper. Um, are there any comments from counsel, Counselor Hawke?
Just that, um, I don't believe we've heard what the highway, uh, contract negotiations are, or what the jail, you know, or the sheriff's negotiations are, or what the fiscal impact of that is.
They haven't finished.
And that's a huge part of our- So I would hope that we're going to be getting this information about where we're gonna be in three years, and plug in these dollars that we just obligated this evening, and see where we are from there.
Yes. That is, that's information that we need. We can't plug in those numbers until those negotiations are completed, and we, yeah, we just don't have them. I, I know that, um, a lot of effort is being made on that, both those fronts, and, um, hopefully we'll get some answers soon. Counselor McKim?
Actually, I wanted to ask a follow-up on that then. Do you have any of the potential fiscal impacts of any of those three, uh, collective bargaining agreements already, essentially already been baked into the budget that we're passing, or that we're considering?
I, I don't think that's been built into the budget. Um, we've talked about the big changes for the correctional officers and the jail contracts. Um, as an update is where we stand, I met with Highway today, they are taking a proposed contract back to their collective bargaining unit, um, and so we're still negotiating on that. The merit deputies have what I think is the final draft of their contract, so they're talking with their bargaining unit. And the one that we're still standing, um, we're kind of in a limbo on, is the correctional officers, because there's talk about whether we put the transitional team, do we provide for that by the contract, or how are we handling that? So, two of the units have their agreements, are reviewing them, um, seeing if they're proposing any additional changes, and we're kinda in a limbo on the jail.
Okay, so for the two that you already know, what are the major changes versus what we already have in the budget? I mean, you don't have to give specific numbers, just kind of-
I don't know that there's that many major changes to the highway contract. Um, for the deputies, the major change is that, uh, in accordance with FLSA, their specialty pay is not going to be paid as a lump sum, but it will be converted to an hourly rate. And so, um, we try to figure an hourly rate that is comparable to what their lump sum would be, but the fiscal impact that is a little harder to account for in doing that is if we, if their specialty pay becomes an at, part of their hourly rate, their hourly rate dictates their overtime rate, and so, um, what I've asked the sheriff's office to provide me, and we've been having, we, they're working with us, is a list of, um, who's on what specialty team, um, who's on what shift, so that we can try to figure out what the hourly rates are, so if that, if no changes happened, um, on, on their shift assignments or specialty, what would be the fiscal impact, and then try to figure out an estimate of overtime.
So it's basically the, the, the upshot is, might be a little more overtime?
I would say most certainly will be o- more overtime. Counselor Munson? No? Okay. Um, and, I mean, that's a really good, that's an important topic, do you have-
Oh, I have another comment that's not related to this, so fin- finish with-
No, go right ahead, I just noted-
There's a side convo?
No, I, I just actually, I kind of, you, uh, counsel, or Wiltz, you were talking about the sausage being made earlier, and, you know, I- that's one of the things I really like about the county council, is that we really do craft our budgets in this room on, on camera. I mean, I know that there, you know, there've been issues in the city where, uh, that have been reported on recently, that, uh, about budget decisions being made behind closed doors, these, you know, we really do make, and sometimes it's ugly, and sometimes-
So, I was just gonna say, I was gonna say it's not pretty.
We're not always as organized as, as, you know, we could be, but I feel like, on the other hand, we're doing it in front of people, in front of the public, so.
Yeah. Advantages and disadvantages. Counselor Hawke?
Look, I believe we should make those decisions here. The decisions are not to be made by staff, ever. They're not to be made by anyone other than the elected body to make these decisions. And the public elects us to do that, and we ought not to try to push it off onto somebody else and pretend we didn't know we had a problem. So, I appreciate the fact that the sausage was made here in front of everyone. Now, what I would like to see is we get the start a little bit earlier, because those of you who like staying up until ten o'clock at night after you've been going, it's at six o'clock in the morning.
That is not me.
I wish you all the best of luck, I'm not gonna join you in that, you know, little opportunity. So, we ought to have, we ought to have the information we need, so we're not having to completely readdress every problem we have, because the numbers keep changing. I just think-
I, I, I agree with you, and to, to your point, um, Ms. Shell sent out a draft of a 2024 calendar, and so I would encourage you all to take a close look at it and make a suggestion as to how to build more time into this process, maybe it is just scooching everything up a little bit, but I know that there are deadlines that happen that trigger our activities, so, I, the auditors are going nuts over there, the whole table's just shaking. To, I, let me just finish one thing, and then, then you can go right for it. Um, another thing that I'm suggesting, and, and we can talk about at our next meeting, is moving council meetings to five PM instead of five-thirty, it's just a little thirty-minute change. Gets it a little bit closer to the end of the workday for our employees, um, and for the department staff who have to a- attend for whatever reason, um, and hopefully gets you home before ten. Auditor Smith?
Yes, thank you, I'm glad you brought this up, 'cause I have a suggestion. When we were at AIC, there was one single auditor in our ninety-two counties that believed we were not done with our budget. They couldn't believe that we had a council meeting during AIC. So, I've got something I would like to ask you. Before, before I ask, I do want to say that AIC is more than just professional development. The treasurer, the auditor, and several of us are required to go to a meeting that just happens to happen on Tuesday. It was, started at eight or nine and went pretty much to the afternoon. That's required, because we, we're not like the assessors, where we have to go to this other training and get, you know, renewed, their license renewed, or whatever it is. We have to be at three meetings a year, and that one always falls on this meeting, and then we rush to get the, um, we rushes to get her thing set up, and then try, trying to do her items. So I have a suggestion, and then I spoke with Angie today about this. If you'll look at the proposed September date, um, for next year, the, the seventeenth and the eighteenth are blocked out as possible six budget sessions, right? And the seventeenth is, the reason we couldn't meet here on that Monday, or that Tuesday, is because planning, a planning meeting, right? So what I would like to do is propose, propose, switching the work session from the twenty-fourth to the seventeenth, and allowing the planning meeting to meet on the seventeenth. That gets our budget done, um, if we do have to reopen, if you do not complete the budget by that September twelfth, that's in green on that sheet of paper, um, that gives you that next Tuesday to cover a couple items, 'cause sometimes it's not a lot of items, it's just a small amount of stuff. And then that opens up that week of, the last week of September, so that everyone can attend AIC, including you guys and the commissioners, and really everyone. Um, like, like when, when I was, when I first came, Marty went to those meetings every time. We would sit there and we'd discuss, and sometimes we'd argue about the different, uh, codes. But it was all very, very good information, and a lot of those things shaped the new laws. Marty went testified in a lot of, uh, committee hearings, and, uh, but, and Bill, you know, when, when they get ready to, uh, adopt the bills. I have done that as well, and one of the reasons we have payment plans for tax sales is because I went and fought for that really hard at the state. One reason we have the extra court is because Marty and me and several other people went and fought for that extra court, remember that, Marty? Remember going, fighting for that extra court? Uh, do you, I don't know if you hear me, we fought for that extra court because we needed it, we couldn't get-
I wanted one, I didn't want two.
But, well, we fought for the one, we end up getting two. But what I'm saying is, if we don't go and hear all the proposed legislation, that's how something slips through. And something slipped through last year that affected the assessor and us, and as far as exemptions, and now it is causing us a lot of expense and time to fix it. So I would really like, um, you guys to block off that last week of September, so that all the professionals, um, not just elected officials, but that, like Lisa always goes, and, you know, she comes to the council meetings regular, that that week is kind of, becomes sacred again, like it used to be, for AIC, thank you.
Why not?
That seems like a reasonable request, um-
Very good. AIC would appreciate us, having us there, having us more involved.
Okay. Um, please make sure that that comment gets captured, and, yep. And anybody else who has suggestions, please go ahead and just submit them to the council office, and we can look at an updated version next week.
Okay.
Are there council comments, or, yeah, go right ahead.
Right, and, uh, we have on Facebook comment, uh, with, uh, county councils, where we talk about different things going on in different counties, and it's clear to me that some, I said, "Well, what does your four B say?", and, well, they hadn't seen the four B, uh, so they're not, I was, well, you know, check your miscellaneous revenue, so I'm just saying, folks, maybe we do put in a few more hours than some. And I know that people used to make fun of us and say, "Well, do you want to have seven more auditors?" Well, no, but you want seven people to understand what the auditor presents to us. So kudos to this council, and, and make sure that we, all of us, want to attend all of those online training sessions, they've got, that Budget 101, if everybody hasn't watched that on DLJ, it's free, folks, it's free. You know, you remember when I sent that to you, remember? And I said, "Everybody, everybody needs to watch that." Uh, but in discussing this with some of the other council people, and some of them actually called me and said, "Well, what about this?", or "What about that?" And, of course, you know I love to talk county government, but I found out some of these counties are in real trouble, because they spent over their amount, and because their assessed values haven't grown like ours did. Same little house, ours worth a lot more than theirs, so they're losing so much in their circuit breaker that it's eating up their four percent growth. So that's a reason why it's important for us to follow what's going on in the state, because if they change laws just for those little counties, and then they don't understand that we have a different set of problems and situations, then our voices aren't being heard. So, I just wanna say kudos to this council, we've not had to go borrow money to make payroll. Don't want to.
Indeed. Other council comments? I'm gonna go with Counselor Munson, and then, uh, Counselor Crossley.
Back to the, uh, budget scheduling, one of our, our biggest hang-ups seems to be, uh, contract negotiations, and when those contracts are finalized. And that has stumbled us, uh, a number of years in the, in the past, and I don't think it's gonna stumble us this year, at least I certainly hope not, but, um, how can we, how can we move the dates up for, um, those negotiations? And, and having a, a firm goal of, of wrapping up the contract. Does anybody have any ideas? Ooh, don't everybody jump up and talk about this?
Certainly need to talk with the legal department, I know our highway department tried to start much earlier, much earlier, and, and it was, you know, maybe, maybe our legal department was just too busy to get to it, or whatever, but that really delayed it. So, uh, maybe we need to have some kind of deadline to say, "You will meet with the, for the contracts, and get us an answer for our budgets." But I don't know that we can order, you know, order-
I'm not sure that, how it works.
We can order that, it's unions, you know.
We'll check into it. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an important factor, and, um, I think, I think we need to think of all of the events, um, information, items, due dates, that impact our budget calendar, and really look at what we can push earlier, because I know it's really difficult for staff. Other comments?
Oh, yes, I forgot, sorry. I'm quiet today. Um, first of all, uh, in listening to this discussion, it sounds like people are hungry, because there's a lot of sausage talk. That keeps happening. I'm just like, that's a lot. Um, but again, it just shows the job that we do, and that we continue to do, and it's not an easy job, it's not a glamorous job, but, um, I'm very thankful to be in the position that I'm in, um, to be in this position, in the seat, to do these kinds of things. Um, I learned a lot from this discussion, and I learned a lot, this is what, my second budget season, so I've learned a lot. Um, I will say, for me, I know what everybody has said, and I will, obviously I voted for it, um, to give more of a chance to our salary grid, since we has, have created that, so I will definitely make sure to, um, give it a thought, as I did with my vote. Uh, it still makes me a little uncomfortable, but as Counselor McKim said, we have to do it, and we will do it. So I appreciated the conversation, the dialogue, the sausage-making that we continue to do, and looking forward to officially adopting this in our next meeting. Well, next, next meeting.
The next, next.
Yes, the next, next meeting.
Thank you. Other comments? Any other comments from council? In that case, we are adjourned.